I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. As always, please turn off your cell phones. At one announcement, our next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, February 3rd, at 9:00.
3rd or 13th?
Or 13th, excuse me, at 9:00 here at the community center. Before we get into our program, David Ford would like to introduce a special guest, Jack Warfield, the president of the Latin American Tour. So David, if you'd come up, please.
Good morning. David Ford, Sun and Lake Golf Club. I just wanted to come over and introduce Jack Warfield from the PGA Latino America Tour. And he just wanted to give you guys an update on how the tournament's going and talk a little bit about the tour. So we'll hand it over to Jack.
Thank you. Doing a little leaning today. First of all, I hope the attendance is not because you heard I was going to speak. So there's a few empty chairs, but I know this is one of your monthly meetings. But first of all, I want to say thank you to everyone. This is our third year here at Sun and Lake. We've had a great experience here. The hospitality that's shown by the club and the community has been outstanding. The experience, I'm a small-town Indiana guy, so it's always nice to go part of Florida that's not like Jacksonville, or Orlando, or Miami. We enjoy it, and our staff, we have about 10 staff people here, some from South America, others from all over the country. So we look forward to this very much. I think those of you, see hands, any volunteers in here that we saw last night? It's been the best weather we've had in three years, so we're very thankful for that. And hopefully, we'll have that again today, because things go much better in our business when the weather's good. I'll finish with a general concept about what this is all about. And you know, the PGA Tour brand is a huge company, huge brand in professional golf. We have many different products in our tour business, all the way from PGA Tour, the Tiger Woods and Phil Mickelson play on, to the Champions Tour, which are the legends of the game that we've all known for years. But the most important stepping stone that we created a couple of years ago was the opportunity for these types of tours to feed in, to qualify for the Web.com, which is the only way to qualify for the PGA Tour. So they're all owned and operated by our company. They all fit in in a very clean and neat stepping stone product to generate opportunities for young players, many of whom you have seen around this week. Very talented young men, very excited about their future, some of them very disappointed this week, many of them very happy. But at the end of the day, that's what this game has always been about. You know, if you don't succeed this year, you probably need to go home or work a little harder for next year. But at the end of the day, we've had, in three years' time, we've had a very successful product. We've generated about 25 guys' opportunities that are now members of the Web.com Tour, and four guys have made it all the way to the PGA Tour in this short window of time. So the strategy around this is very important. Playing in grassroots communities like Sebring, Florida is very important to us as well. Players have all talked about what a great week they've had, some have stayed in private housing, played in the Pro-Am, played the golf courses in very good condition, and my hat's off to the staff here for that. So I wanted to take the opportunity, I'm glad I was asked, to say thank you. It's a very important part of our product. We're going to be going to Lima and Buenos Aires next week with two more qualifiers, and then the tour starts the third week of March. We're going to play, eventually, we're going to end up playing 20 events this year in 14 different countries. So my hat's off to you, it's a very nice community. I've been through here for 30 years, and at one point in time, I know when you came through, Sun and Lake was almost the only thing on the right side of 27 in Sebring. So a lot of growth, very nice community, and the golf course is a great experience for us. So thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I'll let you get to homeowner issues.
Thank you, Jack. It's a real pleasure having you here, and I know that we look forward to this every year. It's becoming, I think, a Sun and Lake tradition. And I would join with you in saying congratulations to our staff and volunteers for another fine year in this area. So we hope this will continue for many years to come. So thank you again. By the way, I was looking for Jim Nance and Nick Feldal around, and I didn't see them. Are they?
I can tell you, there's two guys here that probably give those guys the run for money I'm going to give.
Very good. Thanks again, Jack.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda before we adjourn. Do I have a motion for approval?
I make that a motion.
Second.
Do we have any comments on the consent agenda? Any public comments? Bring it back to the board. Kayla?
Supervisor Holbert?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes.
I need a motion to adjourn, to conduct the landowners' meeting, after which, when we finish with that business, we'll reconvene the board meeting.
Motion adjourned. I'll second that.
Okay, Kayla?
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. I'll remain to consider nominations for chairman to conduct the annual landowners' meeting. It doesn't matter. Are there any nominations from the floor regarding Mr. Deot?
We've nominated Rex Bond.
Rex Bond is nominated. Do we have a second? Second. Are there any other four nominations? If not, the nominations are closed. Mr. Bond, if you'll come up, please.
I thought we were... Yeah, we're...
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I know this has interfered with some of your sleep this morning, and the others, their golf game, but we're happy that you are here and that you will go away being a little more informed about the special districts than you are now, because we'll have a report from our general manager, and I'm sure some others. Before we go any farther, we have to have a secretary. Two important things, you have to know how to read and how to write. So if you qualify, then you'll be eligible to be elected secretary. If you don't qualify, just don't hold your hand up. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion that we appoint a secretary to the Board of, to take the minutes of the landowners' meeting. That normally is the secretary, as long as I can remember, is the secretary to the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. President, Chairman, Chief's not here today, so...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Chief's not here today, so I'd like to nominate Kayla for to be our president, Chair. Second. I'll back in.
Chair will entertain any other nominations. If not, then the young lady will act as our secretary today. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the landowners' meeting held January 24, 2014. I assume that the general manager or the secretary has a copy of that, and if you would read it at this time, we appreciate it.
Mr. Bond, do you want us to read it, or just because it's been widely distributed, or just to accept it as presented unless there are any objections or people wishing to make comments? Because it has been, like I said, widely advertised and available for the public.
Well, we will follow our normal procedure, and the minutes, you might highlight some of the things that you have in the minutes that are apropos for this meeting. And unless our attorney has some objections to that, why then I would suggest that they make the presentation as presented.
Attorney has no objection.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wright, are you going to highlight those, or are you going to have the secretary?
Let me highlight them, if I could. Dick Deot was appointed chairman and did chair the meeting. The minutes were accepted. The general manager's report was read into the record and is made a part of the minutes. And at the conclusion of that, a motion was made to accept the minutes as presented. Mr. Miller asked that we advertise the meeting extensively, which we have subsequently done. And that is essentially the summary of the minutes.
Is there any additions or corrections that needs to be committed on at this time by anybody in the public, or any landowner, or a member of the Board of Supervisors? If not, the chair will entertain a motion that the minutes be accepted. And that's the minutes for the meeting held, well, January 24, 2014.
Correct.
It's been moved, is there a second? Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Then the minutes are accepted. And those are the minutes for January 24, 2014. If you'd like a copy of them, there will be a copy available in the office. Any of the records of the district are public records, and if you find that you either don't understand or need to know more about something, feel free to go to the office and get a copy. We have an item at this time that probably requires some discussion, and anytime you're spending somebody else's money, you need to discuss it. But discussion regarding a mail-out poll to gauge public support to pay for the cost of burying utility lines on Sun and Lake Boulevard. In other words, the Board of Supervisors is requiring or hoping that you will have some comment about it, and if you have any questions, I'm sure that he will be able to answer them for you. Mr. Miller, would you come up to the microphone, please, sir?
My name's Dick Miller, for the record. This is on the agenda for the landowners' meeting, simply from the standpoint that over the past year, I guess maybe two years, the question of whether or not we bury these mess of wires all along Sun and Lake Boulevard should be done or not. The Board has entertained that seriously at different times, but the problem, I'm not saying the problem, but the thing that has sort of been of major, the 800-pound elephant in the room, has been the cost is at least $2.5 to $4 million to bury it. And because of that, we didn't feel that that was something that we could undertake independently by ourselves as a board. So it was my idea, I guess, to put this out to the general community, to gauge what sort of support we have for this, because if we do this, this will be a financial impact on all the landowners and property owners in the community. And I've asked Tanya, our chief financial officer, and Mike Wright, our general manager, to come up with some numbers that may or may not come into play if we decide to do this. So Mike, do you have those figures?
Project cost, based on some preliminary numbers provided by Duke Power, estimated the project probably between $4 and $5 million. I don't think we could do it for $2.5, because their estimates for the clubhouse to Cortez, I think, pushed around $1.8 million. And it's very difficult, and we didn't get a final number from the town hall to US 27, but that's probably a more expensive link than the one they did give us numbers on. Secondly, we've, Ms. Kennedy and I have discussed internally what it would take to do a mail-out ballot, and it will depend really on which direction the board or the landowners choose to follow. There are, what, roughly 10,000 property owners in the district, excluding the district? So if you mail everyone a ballot, you could be looking at upwards of 9,000 to 10,000 individual ballots. And the reason there'd be less ballots is there are some property owners, like Highlands County, that really controls over 1,000 properties, and conceivably, they could be put in one letter, and which would reduce our mailing cost. But the other thing that we've discussed is, are we mail them only to people who are eligible to vote in a landowners' election? Which would be those property owners who are current in their assessments, and that's in a neighborhood of probably 5,000 ballots. And we estimated the cost per ballot to be around $3, from $2.5 to $3, depending on whether or not we include a self-stamped, if we pay for the return postage on a mail-in ballot. So there's roughly what you're looking at, cost-wise.
What about the impact, the financial impact on each property owner if we decide to do this?
Again, we can't do it as a capital project. So you can't do it as a special assessment. So what you're looking at is dividing $4 to $5 million, essentially over 5,000 property owners, because we have about 5,000 property owners that are currently not paying. And if you want to get fully repaid, what you would have to do is simply borrow the money or pre-fund it out of our reserves, and then increase the assessment per property owner to cover it. So you're looking at, our annual collections in the general fund are about $3.6 million. So you're looking at an assessment increase somewhere in the neighborhood of 130% of one-year's bill divided over a number of years. If you decide to pay it back in five years, it'll be five divided into about 130% of your assessment, or 10 years, it could be a different number. So we did very general numbers, we didn't get into the specific numbers, simply because we don't have, we don't know what the firm construction cost would be, and we have to use rough estimates of what the impacts will be. So, and we have different people who pay different amounts. We have one customer who pays over $300,000, and then we have property owners in the undeveloped areas of the district that pay $292. So we used a percentage of what it would cost, and then tried to divide it by the property owner. So figure out what you pay, multiply it times about 130%, and then divide it by the number of years that would be decided on as payback period.
A question from Mr. McClure. Is there any particular timeframe that we would have to adhere to in terms of amortizing this expenditure, five years, 10 years?
There is no limitation on the short end of the spectrum. The limitation is on the long end of the spectrum, you can't go beyond 30 years.
So we'd have that option?
You have that option, yes.
Well, okay, to summarize, this would be probably the biggest single project that this community will have ever undertaken. And I believe, and I think my board members share this, that this should be put in front of the community. I think the citizens, the residents in this community should decide whether or not that is of the most importance, or of importance enough to obligate us to this kind of a financial payback. So if we did over 20 years, I don't know, I was hoping you'd have more definitive numbers than that, but I guess I'm asking today is the group that's here, which, for better or for worse, represent our landowners at this time, whether or not there's support for informal poll, and by that I mean that one way or the other, the poll would not be legally binding. It would be an expression of community interest and so forth. So I'd like to hear, entertain any comments from any of the members here.
Question with the power lines, with the power lines, and the second question in that line is, how about the utilities? Are they going to participate in any way in the project?
We need people to come to the microphone, and we need to get their names for the record.
Sir, you come up, please. Repeat that, ma'am. That's Mr. Call, Mrs. Call. Carl Ueherlanger, U-E-H-L-I-N-G-E-R, I have a question regarding, number one, why this must be done, and the second is, is the utilities going to participate financially in any way if this project were undertaken? To answer the first point, thanks for picking up the pencil, answer the first point, it doesn't have to be done. The reason that we're raising it today is, it comes up from time to time, and it gets fairly impassioned one way or the other. People feel very strongly that these represent a deterrent, visual deterrent, as we come into the community and so forth. And other people are just as adamant that it doesn't mean anything. So I'd like to kind of put, well, put this to bed and see what support and non-support we have. And I think the answer on utilities is that we could...
The answer to the second question is no, they will not participate.
Well, when you say participate, you mean, can we use funding from the utilities to help pay for this?
Yes, no, they will not participate.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Yes.
Back in, Jimmy, for the record. I've been to several of these meetings where this has been discussed, and it seems to be a group that finds the wires a little unpleasant to look at. I don't think that $5 million could, is better spent, I think that $5 million is better spent in the whole community on different projects other than that one. And the other thing is, I believe in the past, that the district has paid $10,000 to Duke Energy to do a study to see how much this would cost. And they came up with between, at that time, $2 to $3 million. Now, we all know that that's a cost estimate, and that there will be overruns. So if it comes to $5 million and there's overruns, I think that's a lot of money for all of us to bear. Because I don't think that burying these wires is going to bring people into this district. Good management, good amenities, and good people will bring people into this district, but not just burying wires at $5 million.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Gene, are you coming up?
Gene Gange, Jimmy, resident. This has come up several times the last few years, and I still have not been able to find out who is really behind this push to bury the power lines. Is it one person, is it two, two people, three people, is it a group? But, you know, burying the wires, you know, you're running into water problems down there. I don't think anybody has even asked the businesses down here, are they willing to contribute to bury the lines? What's their position on it? Do they feel offended by driving in and seeing power lines? You're still going to have the poles, you're still going to have the lights hanging down from there, and you're thinking going from $2 to $3 million, now you're up to $4 or $5 million. And it just seems, there's a lot of amenities that can be added to this area than just trying to bury lines because a group of people don't like looking at them. I just don't see any purpose in that, and you're going to spend, what, $7,000, $8,000 to send out a mailing? And most mailings, you probably, if you're fortunate, rule of thumb is you might get 33% back. So to me, it's just a wasted effort, and this comes up every couple of years. Let's bury the lines. It's unfortunate to really have to think about spending another $100, $200 a year just to bury these. We haven't had an assessment increase in three to five years in here. So in all this time, they had all this money, they never gave back any $500 or $200 to anybody, they just kept plugging along. But to spend the money on this, you're not going to get the county, the county's not going to give you a dime towards this, because it's their road. They're not going to put anything in it. And the inconvenience of people trying to get to the businesses, I think it's, I don't know what it is, I just don't know why some people are adamant about burying the lines. If it's that bad, then maybe I'll wear sunglasses when you come in there or something. It's just sad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Gene.
I know Duke Power, when they came to town, one of the first places they came was Sun and Lake, so we must have put on our good face that day.
Yeah, lucky us. Okay, are there any other comments?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, I'd like to get this, if we have no support, then we can put this thing to bed and move on. So that's the main thing.
Good. Do you folks need any more information before we see whether you would like to have this, or if we want to wait for another day? So what's a wish of the group? Well, let's try it this way. I don't think it requires a secret ballot, this is a straw vote, if you want to call it that, and straw votes are just that. But how many of you would like to see this project started? And how many of you would like to see the board approve it? Signify by raising your hand. Those of you that think we should delay... Those of you that think we should delay it at this time, table it. This is a non-binding vote. Show your hand. Very close, but it appears to me that those have it. Thank you very much for your help. We'll move on now to our next item. This is another subject that comes up every time we have a meeting. In fact, I think it's probably the most talked about subject in this district over the past 40 years, and that's voting. And we have an item on the agenda that says, "Discussion of Current Landowner Voting Process." Well, you know, we have a landowners' meeting, regular meeting once a year. Then we have, not monthly, well, we have monthly meetings by the Board of Supervisors that represents all of the landowners in Sunny Lake. But we always find that there's something that someone wants or sees and the supervisors need guidance and help with it. So, at this time, I would ask our general manager.
Actually, Mr. Bond, I think Mr. McClure is going to do this and he'll be stepping into the room in just one moment. If you could, as we used to say in radio, stretch the moment for a few minutes, stretch it for a few moments.
Well, the older you get, the less you should say. If you don't believe it, ask your children. But there are a lot of things going on in the district, a lot of good things, and we have bad things, like any municipality. Another program that we're going to face someday is whether we ever want to incorporate into a city. We've had some discussions on that in the past, get mixed feelings, but we've never come through with a firm decision, yes or no. We did make one decision several years ago and that was not to do it. And they considered the cost. But that's a subject that comes up. They say, "Well, what about the police department?" "Well, we have security." "Well, they can't arrest anybody." Well, that's probably good because everybody nowadays seems to be wanting to shoot somebody, not in Sunny Lake, of course. But do you have anything new? Let me say this, if you haven't seen it yet, I will go ahead and tell you, you know, Mr. Wright is going to be retiring or traveling or doing whatever he wants to come October. I didn't realize he was that old, but, you know, it catches up with us. It catches up with us. Look around, see what you see. If any of you have a subject that you would like to talk about while Mr. McClure is preparing for his presentation, I can't hardly wait to hear it. Well, I think, what about the district manager's annual report on behalf of the board? Can we get on into that? Because he's going to be here anyhow.
Yes, sir. It's, we've, I've been asked this year, rather than to read it, to make copies available to the general public, which we have done by the entrance, and to basically summarize some of the highlights, which I will do and for the sake of keeping people awake. Let me start by saying that some of the highlights include the fact that we've replaced all of our golf carts. And we've also included a GPS system on each cart, which is something that no other golf course has in the county. And we've been very successful in selling advertising to help pay for it. So, that's progressing well. The habit, some of the habitat restoration on Turtle has just about been completed with the exception of some control burns that we need to do when the weather permits. And in addition to that, we are continuing our reforestation, putting trees in the ground with the $25,000 in funding. That's in addition to the 500 or so trees that have already been planted. Financially, the golf club is doing much better. Revenues were up by about $450,000 and the gap between operating costs and revenues was reduced by about $350,000 last year, which is pretty significant. One of the things we have done in the non-golf area is really reach out to a number of folks to try to get them into the district and to participate in other events. We, for the first time last year, we actually had a booth that's 12 hours of Sebring. We've had floats in the Sebring Christmas Parade. Last year, we had our 40th anniversary and a number of special events, including pickleball tournaments, golf tournaments, dinner, that ended with a community Easter event. We had more than 1,200 people attend the event, including 500 who participated in the first annual Dash and Dye, which if you didn't see it, was a quite colorful event. And we expect to hold it again this year with even a larger crowd. Our summer camps have been very successful, actually paying for themselves. We had over 2,000 people for our Independence Day review, our Independence Day celebration. And our Oktoberfest, the Pincet Clubhouse were also well-received. And in addition, we've added a second playground to the first playground, plus we've gone in and removed the drainage issues that we had with the playground that made it almost impossible to use during heavy rains. And we put in a safer rubberized playing surface for the kids that use it. General fund remained strong. Our revenues were up by $200,000 last year despite no increase in assessment revenue, which brings our fund balance to more than $4.7 million, which is extremely strong for a government of our size. We've had a number of people use our pools, tennis and fitness memberships. We've increased our revenues by more than $20,000 in those areas. On a more global front, we had 13 new homes started last year, which doesn't sound like much, but when you consider we didn't have that many in the previous five years, that's pretty good. And we expect even more as the New Year progresses. Probably the most significant thing that's going to be facing us this year is what happens to all the lots the county is going to take ownership of through the estatement process. I got a call this week from the county purchasing agent that says, "We have 138 lots in your district. What do you want us to do with them?" And when I told her, "Well, that's nice, but you've got another 1,100 coming." And maybe what we need to have is a more global discussion about what to do with all of them, rather than just a handful that they've currently got. Over the next eight or nine months, the county's going to take ownership of a little over 100 lots per month. With the last ones they achieve, take ownership of being in units 16 and 25, where you have the more desirable lots for building purposes because they have roads, water and sewer. I would add that the only lots the county's taking ownership of are those lots where taxes were not paid for two years, nobody bought tax certificates, they've been on the lands available list for three years. And when the county takes ownership, they own the properties free and clear, all debt is extinguished, and the county can dispose of those properties in whatever lawful manner You've got a number of capital improvement projects that are going to be taking place in the next few months. We're doing cart path replacement and upgrades on deer. Hopefully, we'll be doing tennis court repairs. We've got a, we've signed, the district has signed a contract with Don Bell Signs of Daytona to prepare new signage for the district along with new landscaping plans. That information should be available to the general public in February. They're supposed to bring back three examples and as we move through the process, hopefully by in the next 60 days, we'll be in a position to put out for bid the new signage and landscaping for the district for all the entrances, as well as the two golf courses and general signs throughout the district. Utility fund continues to do well financially. Despite spending more than $1 million on capital improvements, we still have a cash balance of $3.4 million in our capital improvement fund and more than $700,000 in unrestricted cash, which is over $4 million. Not bad for a utility that has about $2 million in operating revenues. And with that being said, this is my last annual report. I am retiring at the end of this fiscal year. It's been almost 40 years in this business. I started in 1976 as the youngest city manager in Florida. And you know what? It's about time. That's it, Mr. Bond.
Thank you, sir. You know, Mr. Wright has been of service to most, every area in Florida. You say, "Oh, golly, Pete, he's changed jobs a lot." That's right. It goes with the territory. If you stay four or five years with one city or county, you've done pretty good. It used to be that way in banking, so they just closed the banks. Look around your community. But we appreciate the work you've done, sir, and you're welcome to come to any of our meetings and we would call on you for some help now and then. All right, let's move on. Any questions? I might add, if you want to get a copy of that, as he says, a copy will be available at the City Hall. And it's good to take those copies and look at them and by the next year, see if the report is anywhere near what is presented. It's tough to predict what will happen in a political atmosphere. Might add too, while we have never highlighted it, I would like to pay a compliment to the people that run our recreation program. We have a big recreation program here, including golf, including pickleball. I know about pickleball because that thing, when I hear it pop, I know somebody's over there. And children's programs are coming along very well, I think, and I just want to compliment you people. Taking care of somebody else's children and planning programs on a minimum budget is a challenge and we appreciate it. I appreciate it. Okay. So, you heard a reading or a synopsis of the activities that the district has undertaken in the past year. And the chair would entertain a motion that this be accepted.
Motion being seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Don't forget to give your name. I think the lady's writing it down over there now.
We've got it.
All those in favor signify by saying a "I."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Then the report is accepted. We will move on now to discussion of current landowner voting process. Is Mr. McClure back yet?
Somebody said he was in the building.
Oh, shucks. I'm sorry. I thought I could say something good. Mr. McClure, as some of you might not know, has been the attorney for the district for many, many years. He's older than he looks, or he's younger than he looks because of being a lawyer is not the easiest thing in the world, they tell me. But anyhow, John, they have on the agenda a little discussion concerning current landowner voting process. Is there anything new? Bring us up to date.
I'm not sure how much or how little to say about this. Much like my age, I try to be quiet about that, too. But the, the, over the many years that the district has existed, it started out as one acre, one vote. Then they started plating lots and selling a lot of lots and the people that bought those lots wanted a bigger voice. So, they said, "Okay, here's what we'll do. We'll make it one lot, one vote. For those who own lots, one acre, one vote. For those who continue to own acreage." And so, that went through. And eventually, through the legislature, because many special districts were starting to develop residentially, a new law was passed. And this law called for a greater voice on the Board of Supervisors for residents. And the reason for that was the large landowners still owned and controlled the vote. They could put the supervisors on the board, so no matter what the residents wanted, it was still controlled by the large landowners. So, the law was changed to say, as your urban density increases, then you will get more and more vote for supervisors based on what is known as the popular election method, which is one person, one vote. And you go to the polls to nominate, to elect your supervisor on the basis of popular, one person, one vote, instead of, instead of how much property you owned, which is the landowner vote. And there is a law that specifies the percentages that you have to have as you transition the vote from a landowner vote, we'll call it, to a popular vote. So, I'm not going to go through all that law with you. If you're interested in it, I'll point you to the statute and you can look it over and read it. But bottom line is, that's what it's about. Within the district, as time went on, there, for those of you who are long timers here, you know that there was contention about, "Well, you know, we don't like the way you're calculating the urban density. We think what you're doing is wrong because your calculations show we still only have two popular elected seats and three landowner elected seats. And we feel that the majority of the seats should be controlled by the residents here." And so, as time went on, this kept getting worse and worse. And ultimately, the county stepped in, and this is good. We're very fortunate here. We are a unique animal in this state. For those of you who don't know it, this district was created by their county commission, but under a law that existed for a total of one year, 1974. They took, they previously held the power in the legislature, they authorized counties to do it, they took the power back. We slipped in the cracks and as a result, we still exist and nobody else does. There were two or three other districts created, they're gone. The other one is gone now, I think. So, we're a unique animal. And the reason I bring it up is, the Board of County Commissioners now has the power to change our charter. And I think that's a very good thing because we're able to go, based on what happens here, just to our local county and get things done. We don't have to worry about traipsing to the legislature and fighting the battles that go on there. So, it really has worked out, I think, to everybody's advantage. The issue was, well, how are we going to deal with the dichotomy between landowners, this conflict between landowners and popular election? And there were some that favored making all supervisors popular elected. There were some who favored staying with the program that said, "No, we have to have the statutory requirement." Ultimately, it was determined that the district no longer elected supervisors on the basis of one acre, one vote, because we were already one lot, one vote. And therefore, the law did not apply directly to the district because we didn't use that method. And a compromise was worked out with the county commissioners that the residents would be given control of the Board of Supervisors by changing, by just mandating, "We're going to have three popular elected supervisors." Easy enough. We don't have to have studies, we don't have to have anything. This is what we're going to do." And that's what they did. And then, as relates to the landowner portion of the election, it's always been difficult, one lot, one vote, where do we go? How do we do this? And remember, too, that we have in place a procedure that says, "If you're not current on your assessment, you don't have any vote." So, there's also a Supreme Court case that says it is very appropriate to allow landowners to have votes because in these special districts, you have, you levy assessments to the, to the landowners and these assessments are used to run the district. That's what we do here. So, it's very apropos to say, therefore, the people that pay the money have a right to say who's going to be on that board and how that money is spent. And I think that's, the Supreme Court got it exactly right when they made that decision. That fights, though, this transition issue. And ultimately, the question comes up, "Well, if you're paying money to contribute to the operation of the government, what should your voice be?" And that's what led to the final change that we have in our, in our charter now. Remember, too, that we were also the only district in the state, to my knowledge, that issued a tiered level initiative. issued a tiered level initially, it'll still do, a tiered level of assessments. If the property is totally unapproved, that's one level. If it's got a road and drainage in front of it, that's another level. If it's got a residence on it, that's another level. So, that was challenged in federal district court, by the way, and the, there's, we have a federal district court opinion that says, "What you guys are doing is straight up. We like the way you're doing it, and we approve this method." So, based on then, the vote that goes out, the Board of Supervisors and went to the county, talked about it, and the determination was made that your actual vote would not be one vote per lot, but rather, and if you, if you think about that, the unapproved property in the back gets the same level of vote as the house with the, with the residents. Okay? So, that didn't seem very fair. And so ultimately, the decision was made, whatever your financial burden is for the district, that's also how you're going to get to vote, which I think is the ultimate fairness. So you have the hospital with $300,000 that they contribute every year to the coffers. With that number of votes, you have the property in the back with maybe $200 and something dollars that they contribute, so that's, if they're current, that's only 200 votes they have. For those of you who live on, let's say, two lots, and you pay $700 for one lot and $400 for another, that's 1,100 votes that you get. So, so really, that is a very good way to allocate the voting methodology. We have yet to have an election within the district using the dollar method. And, and when the next one is going to be, I can't say. You know, that depends on people that want to step forward to even have a contested election. That's another issue. It's difficult to find people willing to serve, unfortunately. But, but that day will come, and, and we will have it. I was asked to explain what is the voting methodology within the district. I think I've gone through a brief history of it and given you the current methodology. That's what exists today, and I think it's a very fair system. The popular seats have control of the board with three members elected. The, the large landowners, who have the greatest burden placed upon them, also have a voice in how to elect the other two. And the reality is that, I think we all see, that there really is no single large interest represented by a supervisor based on election of a vote. So, for instance, for many years, the hospital had a supervisor that was elected. We no longer have that. All of the residents, all the Board Supervisor members are residents within the district, and we're pretty much a self-governed district, doing a great job. So, I think the system's working well, and that's the end of my report. Thank you. Will you allow questions from the floor to me, sir?
Yes, would you take a few questions?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Just, just a moment. They're going to bring the microphone to you, Mr. Stangy.
I am president of the Property Owners Association of Southern Lake. My name is Larry Stangy. I have a letter from the attorney of special districts. Now, I can't think of his name, but anyway, also a letter from the Attorney General that Southern Lake is under 189. Now, the lawyers, my belief is, the lawyers from Southern Lake or Highlands County cannot change the law. Now, as this goes, the Attorney General also said that we're under State Statute 189. And I have a lawsuit here, which I don't want to follow. I would rather talk it over with the board or what have you, and settle it within our district. But I believe everybody that pays money should have a say-so in what takes place within Southern Lake. We are over the amount of people in Southern Lake that should have a vote in the operation of Southern Lake. This is all I work for, is the people have the right to say something. So, I just wanted to bring in what I have, and if you want to see it, I'd be glad to show it to you.
I don't know what to say, Mr. Stangy. I can only tell you that, number one, I completely agree that this district is governed by Chapter 189. I would point out to you that the, the urban density transition issue does clearly, it starts out with this premise. For those districts whose supervisors are elected under the one acre, one vote rule, okay? That's what it says. And, and ours were not elected under that. It was one lot, one vote, which is the whole argument that was presented back when the county commission was reviewing this, and if I'm not wrong, I believe you were leading the charge for that. So, so I'm really not understanding your statement just now. The, you stated that if we pay dollars, we have a say. I don't think I could have made it any clearer that, that we have two people that are elected to this board based on the dollar amount that they pay. So what else could it be?
Well, right here, I have, right here, I have 189. And in this 189, 4051, it explains the qualified elector and so forth. I suggest you read it. And the attorney said this was set up politically, not by law.
Well, I can only say, thank you. Thank you for your comments, is all I can say. I don't know what else to say. There's nothing I can say that's going to pacify you here today. I'm just telling you what the law is and where it stands.
All right, we'll move along. It might be a couple more questions. Anybody else have any comment or question they'd like to ask the attorney? All right, that takes care of that discussion. Now we'll go on, and we've had the, we will have the general manager to give the current report.
I just did. I did previously.
You did?
Right.
Okay, good. Yeah, I didn't move it up on my agenda. All right, unfinished business? Anybody know of any unfinished business? New business? As most of you know, the business of the district is implemented and carried out by the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors, as most of you know, is five people. Three of those are properly elected, as Mr. McClure says, and there are two that are elected by the landowners. Now, the board technically is controlled, if you want, and I hate to say that, but it's controlled by the popular vote. They have three seats elected by popular vote. Mr. Stang, I believe, is indicating that he would like for the five seats to be elected. Isn't that about right, Larry? So that's, that's the difference. It's a, it's, it's a very narrow difference, but that's the way that it's set up now, is a three to two vote, three by the property owners and two by the landowners.
Three by popular vote.
Yes, popular vote. Sorry about that. Make a note. So anyhow, that's, if anybody has anything they'd like to, at any time, to call any change in the law or what have you to the Board of Supervisors, go see them, call them, worry them, because they are your representatives. Anybody have anything else that they would like for the landowners to consider? Because there is a supervisors' meeting to continue immediately after this, maybe a five, 10-minute break, and for some of the older people in here, including myself. We need a little break. But the Board of Supervisors' meeting will continue when this meeting is adjourned. Is there a motion that we adjourn? Anybody make a motion that the landowners' meeting be adjourned? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, stand. The folks standing have it, we will adjourn the landowners' meeting. Thank you so much, people.
First of all, I live here, and I'm an elector. I can vote in the popular. My next-door neighbor, who's Canadian, cannot. But he can vote in the landowner election, because he pays his, pays his money. But in both elections, you have to be a property owner.
I tell you how this.
No, no, red or cannot, he cannot vote.
You have to be a property owner to be a qualified elector.
Thank you, Rex.
You did fine.
I thought so, too. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't realize. But in the policy manual, it says that you can serve consecutive terms. The president wanted any of them.
Me either.
I did. Okay, I don't think Curry drew it.
Who knows?
You win the over, Jake.
You know who the guy is in the sport coat?
I told you. Give you a swig, kick, get you a shit.
No, I don't.
Kurt, were you going to bring this fun issue up about the data you wanted to talk about separately? Before we talk about the topic?
Can we reconvene, please? Okay, we're, John, I got asked earlier if we're using the correct verbiage to adjourn.
No, we're not. It's recess, sir.
Well, it says that on the agenda. What should we be using?
Recession.
Recession, okay.
Yes, sir.
So we're back from recess. First of all, is Rex, where is Rex? I want to thank him for doing the chairman's job this year. He did a nice job. Maybe he's taking a senior break, I don't know. Two other things about the, the election process. Number one, I don't know if everybody knows this, but regardless of what system we use, and we have these two systems, popular and landowner, you have to be a landowner in Southern Lake to vote in any of our elections. And that sort of takes us back to a Jeffersonian-type situation, but here we are. In other words, if you're renting in here, and you're a registered voter in Highland County, you're not eligible to vote in Southern Lake elections. You consider the impact of this, when we have Tanglewood, which has approximately a third of our population, they all pay ground rent, they are not eligible to vote. So their vote is put forward in the landowners' election by the management company that owns Tanglewood. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, is as we've involved into the new landowner voting situation, we have a situation now, for the first time in Southern Lake, that the average landowner, or I should say, the small landowner, whatever, has as much of a chance to influence the election as you would in what we call the popular election. In the past, and, and those of us that have been here for a while remember some of the fights we had over the, at one time, the landowners' meeting, we used to have 200, 300 people in this room, and we had a lot, a lot of things to argue about. But things were dictated. As, as seven, six, seven years ago, we had, we had a large landowners had a stranglehold on this, this community. We had one situation in about 2004, 2005, one landowner dictated the composition of the, of the board. And a board president at that time was removed because of the referendum situation. They controlled enough single votes. This was, this was a developer that had the 6,000 lots, that shall ever remain nameless, in my opinion, but nevertheless, that was an influence. So we've had, we've involved now to the situation that, number one, as, as John mentioned, we have resident control with three seats, but more importantly, in our other two seats, our landowner seats, you as individual landowners can still make a difference, where in the past, that was not the case. So, I'll leave it, leave it at that. Okay, we're now moving on to the one item on our action agenda, and that will be the election of offices to the board. We'll start with the office president. Can I entertain any nominations in that area?
I'd like to nominate Mr. McCullough.
Are there other nominations? Not nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dave Halbig.
I decline. I've had it twice. I decline. Okay, I'll close the nominations. Kayla, if you'll read. Record for the vote, please.
Supervisor McCullough.
Can you vote?
Supervisor Halbig.
Yes.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yeah.
President Miller.
Yes. We now move to the Office of Treasure, which traditionally has been held by our Chief Finance Officer. Entertain nominations for Board Treasure.
I'd like to nominate Tanya at such time, I mean, we have to take this other issue up later, we just have to take it up later.
Right.
I mean, as far as the transition from, to, to switch.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Kayla, if you'll read the roll, please, for this.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yeah.
President Miller.
We now move to the Office of Treasure, which traditionally has been held by our Chief Finance Officer. Entertain nominations for Board Treasure.
I'd like to nominate Tanya at such time, I mean, we have to take this other issue up later, we just have to take it up later.
Right.
I mean, as far as the transition from, to, to switch.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Kayla, if you'll read the roll, please, for this.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
I'd like to nominate Tanya at such time, I mean, we have to take this other issue up later, we just have to take it up later.
Right.
I mean, as far as the transition from, to switch.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Kayla, if you'll read the roll, please, for this.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig.
Yes.
President Miller.
Yes. Last on the list, but not least, of course, the secretary of the board, which has been held by Allison Lee in the past. Need nominations for anybody for board secretary?
Nominate Allison Lee.
Second.
Any further nominations? Kayla, again.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig.
Yes.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
President Miller.
Yes. This time, I shall turn over the gavel to Mr. McCullough and wish him good luck.
Thanks a lot for nothing.
Well, first of all, John McClure, I'm going to keep you busy because this kind of stuff is not up my alley, but we'll give it a whirl anyway, so you can keep me straight. So moving on, the next item on our agenda is add-on items.
I have, I have an add-on item.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to bring back up the assessment adjustment we gave to 5046 Angelo Circle, namely Lynn and Jan Roberts, for discussion, as I've come up with some information that at least possibly changes my view on how we vote.
All right. Any other comments?
The only other comment I'd like to make, and I don't know if this is in the rules of Roberts' order or whatever, I think this ought to be tabled for, till our next meeting, so that the Roberts would have a chance to be here and represent themselves.
Hey, John, didn't you say that this could not be retroactive to them? I mean, once it's...
Here's what my position is on this, sir. Mr. Roberts requested that his property be taxed not, or assessed not as a lot and a half, but rather as a single lot. And that was his request to the board. The board voted three to two to assess it as a single lot. The proper thing to do is, you must be a member of the prevailing party in order to bring a matter back before the board that has previously been decided by the board in the form of a motion for reconsideration. Supervisor White, as I recall, would have voted in favor of it. You were a member of the three to two majority, therefore you were a member of their prevailing party, and I would take your suggestion as a motion for reconsideration. Is that your intention, sir?
Yes, sir.
So that being the case, and several questions have been posed to me. One was, well, what about next year? Can the board's action apply in the future for next year? And my position on that is, what the board did is agree to assess it as a single lot. That was a board determination, and unless the board reconsideres that, there is no going, it would be assessed as a single lot forward, absent some re-change of that. So it's not a matter of anything you've done at the previous meetings that would change next year's application to Mr. Roberts' lot. That would require an actual board change before that goes back to a lot and a half, if that's what the board votes for. You know, that's up to the board. But the, if you're seeking a motion for reconsideration, and you are a member of the prevailing party, then that, that would come back to the, if you get a second to that motion, that is, and it would be treated like any other motion or matter that comes before the board. I believe you also, if I heard you correctly, you would rather table the motion till such time as Mr. Roberts can actually come back before the board to make his position again? And is that going to apply for, see, now, if you're reversing the board's position, I think a strong argument could be made that you're going back to the last year's assessment, or this year's assessment, or I don't know if you tend to do that, or moving forward, or what your position is on that.
Okay, let me, let me state a position on it.
Larry, need to be a little closer.
All right. I'm not looking to go back on anything that we have already done. What I'm looking for is to remove the special adjustment that we gave, that we issued for future, this year's assessment, and therefore base them all on the resolution that we passed last month of 2015-01-09-02. That would make, as far as I know, everybody in the district on an even keel.
Mr. President, at this point, unless there's further questions, I mean, procedurally, you have a motion for reconsideration on the floor, which would require a second, and then it would be typically be open to public discussion, and then the board's consideration of the matter. But because of the request to table the motion, I think you still need a second, and then you need a separate motion to table and a vote on that as well.
Can I get a couple of points of clarification? Are we saying that? Tanya, let me ask this. Mr. Roberts is currently assessed for one lot, and that's been changed, and that's the status right now?
Yes.
And Larry, are you proposing that we revisit that particular decision? Are you proposing that in the future, we reconsider? All right, so that...
Well, I think that's already been stated, right? At the last meeting?
They won that lot.
No, I mean, as far as future going forward, we've already said that they would be assessed as a lot and a half, and...
But a reconsideration, sir, a reconsideration of the board's prior action would apply to this year. That's the way I see it.
I searched the records, I even asked John a couple of times what happens going forward, and I talked to Tanya about it. It was a little, it was questionable as to what it was, and I didn't know it was going to come back. I couldn't bring it back because I voted the other way before, and I appreciate you bringing it back, because I think it was a, you can't do it for one and not do it for the whole, for the whole district. I think Tanya, Tanya's people found this mistake, and I compliment them on it. I think she'll agree that it should have been all along assessed as a lot and a half. Only two people knew about it, Mick Roche and Lynn Roberts, and no one else knew about it, nobody, but the board took action, and it is what it is, but bringing it back, I don't have any, I'd love to do it and have the discussion. But I, and I agree that Mr. Roberts probably should be here to make his arguments, so...
Well, I guess I need to be clear that. Where do we stand today? What is the rule going forward as, based on the last meeting? Are we going to be assessing?
Here's where I see it, okay? First, the board has considered the matter and voted three to two to uphold his assessment of his property as a single lot, okay? Now, that would have to be changed in some way by the board before the staff would be in a position to assess it any other way, because the board has spoken. And so if, if you've made a motion to reconsider that position, and I think when it comes back before the board, based on what I've just heard, I think you're saying that you don't want to penalize him for this year, you're willing to live with that one more year, but next year and years forward, that's what you would like to see as a more consistent assessment.
And that is correct, and according to the, to the stuff that we, the resolution that we made a month ago, it would be assessed as a lot, residential lot, and a lot that is, how do we word that in the other, lot that is... Unimproved lot.
Oh, for the remaining half lot, right. And that is the action the board took, but, but that does, that's just levels and types of assessments for areas where you have a unitary title. That does not affect properties where the board has said, this lot and a half will be assessed as a lot, which you've done in this one case, so that...
Well, if we're not going to, if we're going to live with the vote until the next assessment, then the only issue is, when we go through the budgeting process and we go to set the assessment rates, isn't that the time that this should come up?
Well, again, assessment rate applies to lots, and you said he has one lot, so whatever rate you adopt would be applied to his one lot. Absent some vote by the board to change his lot back to a lot and a half, that would, that could never be applied by the staff, because the board has voted to assess it as one lot.
Well, then I'll leave it to Supervisor White. Would you like to get this on the table before that time and be clear as to what is going to happen next year, or what's your preference?
I guess I got a, I guess I'm not understanding, are you concerned about Mr. Roberts paying his assessments next year, or are you concerned about setting a precedent for everybody else? What is your concern here?
Both.
Okay.
Both. This would be his next year's assessments and any future assessments from...
Okay. Well, if you want to entertain it now, I need a second motion to go on with this.
That's correct. You currently have a motion for reconsideration that's been made, there is no second at this point.
I'll second.
Okay.
At this point, then, sir, I would recommend that there's a motion to table, and until such time as Mr. Roberts can be present for the board to hear, be heard, and the board hear the matter at that time.
All right, and we'll do that at the next meeting, so we'll send Mr. Roberts a letter, I assume, or he'd be contacted?
Contacted.
Larry, you said you had, excuse me, you said you had some information that would change that. You'll share that with the board before we get into this?
Yes, I will.
Any other add-on items?
No, we have a motion to table.
You got to vote.
I need a motion to table this till the next meeting.
I have a motion to table.
Second. We need a vote on that.
Supervisor Miller.
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig.
Yes.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert.
Yes.
President McCullough.
Yes. Do we need public comment at this point?
No, I don't believe so.
I will, I will contact Mr. Roberts, and if he can be at the next meeting, I'll schedule it. If he can't, would you like me to schedule it for the first meeting he can be at?
Yes.
Just in case? Okay.
Okay, moving on to petitions and communications.
I have none.
Staff reports.
Leave there.
That's it?
Other than the ones that are attached, I have none.
You want?
Pretty well covered them all at the last meeting.
You want Mr. Ford?
Yeah, I like, I like, I want some questions. I was going to, going to ask to the PGA, PGA representative while he was here, but he's not here anymore, and I didn't want to delay getting, getting rolling this morning, but I've got some questions concerning the, and I did ask it recess, I probably shouldn't have, but about, about the, normally before they leave, you make a, some sort of a, an agreement for the following year, but I know that you're going to bring it back to the board because the board had a problem with, with costs associated with it. I know you're going to do some sort of a roll-up of the revenue versus, that we get versus what, what the, a good week would be on, on the golf course in normal week, to see whether or not we're, we're at least breaking even on this situation. But the, we're not, we're not getting very much press on this, because I even went on the website, the PGA website, last night trying to find scores for the Latin American Tour. It wasn't on the PGA website. The, and of course, you can't answer this question, there was, there was a lot of articles about the Latin American amateur, but not, not this event, so we're not even getting that exposure this year. Now, last year, you could go on there and you could see the leaderboard, and there was some, there was some pretty nice stuff. There's nothing this year. And I think the entry fee for the players went up to $2,000 this year, that's, so they're getting, what, a quarter of a million dollars, but they, there's no prize money for the players in this thing. I mean, they, they're playing for exemptions, but they're not, there's no prize money at all. I think the prize money for the Pro-Am went, come out of the Pro-Am, what the people paid for the Pro-Am, so they're not contributing that at all. I don't know if they contributed anything to the campaign for Children's Foundation at all out of the, out of the money they get. Do you know if they did or not? I mean, that would have been a great thing for them to do, so it might be something to be mentioned before, before they get out of town. So anyway, that's, I just have some questions about what's currently going on. I don't have anything else.
The, we will be talking with the PGA Tour before they leave regarding, you know, future. At that time, we, we will not be making a decision until we bring it back before the board, which will probably either the very next meeting or the, or the meeting after, depending on whether we can fit it on the agenda or not. You know, as far as the website goes, I was not aware of that. I've been able to go to the PGA Latino America site and go to the leaderboard pretty much every day. They have a total section on their website that says qualifying school in Sebring. So I don't know that, you know, I'm not sure, you know, maybe it's just we communicated the wrong website.
Yeah, I might be on the wrong side. I went to PGA, PGA official website, and I couldn't find it unless I just missed it, which is possible.
Well, the PGA Tour website, that one's a little different, but they do have a, on the PGA Tour website, which I'm sure is fairly small, there's a Latino America link that you could hit, and then it would take you to the, the Latino America Tour has their own website. And on that website, we are fairly prominently placed, you know, kind of right in the middle, and they have a leaderboard that tracks how the guys are doing every day. But I will be bringing everything back to the board. They have been willing to talk about, you know, moving the event a week earlier versus the third week of January, it would be the second week of January, which is better for the club, it's a little slower at that time, we really start ramping up this week. And then they've also talked about more, more money as well. So those are two things that I'll bring back to the board, and we can discuss at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, John McClure's general counsel report.
Yes, sir, I would, I would remind the board that Mr. Severina's deposition is scheduled for January 27th within the prison system, so there, so far as I know, that's still on, so far as I know, that's still going to occur. I believe that all sides are kind of waiting for his deposition before they enter into the final settlement negotiation issue. And remember, too, that we are represented by PRM, Roper and Roper, and I can tell you, I'm very sure that they're looking to get this off their books, and they want to get it settled, so they're throwing money at it a little bit to get it done, to avoid future legal fees of an extensive trial. They've already spent, I think I saw the number, well, I don't want to say what the number was, but I think it was over $100,000 in legal fees at this point, and they have a $20,000 settlement on the table. So obviously, it makes sense economically for them to get it settled before it goes to trial. Whether it will be or not, who knows? More expense with Mr. Severina's deposition and transcriptions, so we'll just have to wait and see what comes out of that and where we go in the future. So just giving you that report. Number two, Mr. McIntyre left a voicemail for me yesterday to state that he had gotten with their legal counsel and had reviewed our application for exemption. He did state that one of the things they were going to be looking for, and he wanted more information from the district, was whether or not the golf course was leased out or operated by a third party, that he felt in some way that was going to be material to, to their considerations. So where we go from here, I'm not sure, but I will be, I will be calling our legal counsel to ask him about his opinion regarding the effect of this operation by a third party issue, so that we can make sure to couch our response. responses to Mr. McIntyre's questions in the most favorable light to the district. So we'll see where that goes. I'm not, I can certainly understand the lease position. I think he would be dead right about that. With respect to the operation by a third party, you know, that's still, we still own it, we still operate it, even though we're using by contract a third party to help us with that. So I distinguish those two things considerably under the body of law that has developed regarding exemption matters. We might be making some more law on this, and I can assure you that the property appraiser loves to make law. So.
Yeah, I think the word is control. It might be operated, but it's still controlled by this district.
And all that, I'm just telling you, buckle up, guys, because I think you're gonna be in for a battle. And during the depositions, all those types of things will be addressed and will come out. But my strongest suspicion is this is going to be challenged, it will not be granted. And that's just suspicion. I'm not saying what he will do. Please don't misunderstand me. But based on the phone call I received, I think they're looking pretty hard at this area. And because it is not clear in the law, and because property appraisers love cases just like this, that would address a specific area that's unclear to try to make some law in that area, we are ideally positioned for exactly that. So I expect to see that.
I assume he has our resolution in hand?
Oh, yes. He's got the whole package. Sure. Number three is our prior president asked me to look at an issue which I have reviewed and looked at. You will recall that I brought to you previously a request that we have some procedure in place regarding our assessments for notice and what you're gonna get, et cetera. And you asked me to write something up. I have not yet written anything up. Just to let you know, I've held that off in the back burner, and here's why. I spoke to Terry Lewis about this issue. And Terry, he's a general counsel for Association of Special Districts, as I'm sure you know. And Mr. Lewis basically said that we are such an anomaly in the world of special districts and the world of assessments and everything else, that he said, there's really nothing I can tell you that we have precedent for. Bottom line is this, that all of his districts use the placement on the tax roll method and therefore, this issue doesn't come up for them. With respect to us, the issue is some type of due process. And again, he said he concurred completely with the recommendation I had given to the board on the one hand, because that's, due process means, okay, tell me how much it is I owe, give me an opportunity to challenge that and have my day if I disagree with it, and then we'll move on to finalizing the assessment roll. But the key point I want to bring up here is that in doing my research and in speaking with Mr. Lewis, here's the bottom line. The bottom line is for special districts, under the law, there is no requirement beyond the publication of the notice and the public meetings to develop the assessment. Okay? My position was, we have people scattered all over the globe that own properties here. There's no way that they're ever gonna know what their assessment's gonna be based on that type of notice. However, it still, it ultimately comes down to the political desire of the board. In other words, what due process does the board wish to provide? So if you wish to stay with the way we are, in other words, just do our publications and the opportunities, public meetings, that is going to pass the minimum requirements of the law. So having said that, again, I've spent no money in any kind, I did spend money talking to Mr. Lewis, but other than that, that's been it. So it's really gonna be up to the board. If you wish for me to proceed to develop something more, I will. If you wish to say, thank you, but no thank you, we're gonna leave it like it is, it does meet the minimum requirements. What we don't have is anything in place. If we just kept those minimum requirements there, after we send the bills out, we have nothing in place for a property owner to come back and say, wait a minute, what about this? So the issue's gonna be ultimately, when is our bill final? In other words, you can't challenge after this date. And I think if we had a board policy that is much akin to what we have in the law, which is after you receive your notice, 60 days after that, you lose your right to challenge. And we put in place, as we had previously discussed, some type of appeal board consisting of a board member, the comptroller, and whomever else you wish to serve on the committee, then perhaps that would be the best way to address the matter instead of having a mass mail out prior to the assessment becoming final.
You know, we've got a, I can't remember the policy number. I mentioned at that meeting, we were discussing this. And we've got a responsibility to put together a procedure, really, because the policy says the board's gonna put together a procedure.
Let's say that.
And that needs to happen anyway.
Statute's.
So I think we ought to write, in my opinion, I think we ought to write one. I think, and I don't know if you asked Terry Lewis, if a note on the bill would satisfy more than the minimum requirement.
I would have to ask, in my opinion, if we put a note on the bill that addresses your right to, that's not final until 60 days, that you have a right to challenge it in 60 days, if you pay it early, you still get the discount, but, you know, those kinds of things.
Right. And that would save us a separate mailing.
It would, yes.
Under that scenario, then, does that mean that the board then hears any kind of appeal, like we heard Mr. Roberts' appeal?
Well, you know, I will say this, that the, within the Board of County Commissioners, while they use their magistrate to determine things, everything of that nature, that ultimately, those recommendations still come before the Board of County Commissioners to make the final decision. And I think, you know, you can just say, move to adopt the motion of the board, or the appeal board, I guess we'll call it, as a final board adoption, and you could do it that way.
Well, writing such a procedure, would you recommend that there be an interim appeal? Or how would you, in a perfect world, what would you recommend?
Well, really and truly, I'm gonna throw it back to you, and here's why. So if there are appeals, if the board does not wish to set as an appeal board, then the way to avoid that is to appoint this other interim committee to hear the appeals and have a recommendation come out of that committee to the board that you can adopt or not adopt. Okay? So that's gonna be your choice as to how you wish to set that up. Historically, we've had very, very few complaints or appeals regarding the assessment.
Well, that would work if that represents a final court of appeal. But if we have another body established to hear appeals, and they don't accept that and still come to the board, we're right back where we started. So we either put something intermediate in place that that's it, and we don't deal with it, or if we have to deal with it, then let's deal with it.
Okay. Ultimately, you are gonna have to deal with it. So many, at the county level, it's almost always resolved at the lower level. Okay? But I think the final assessment role has to come to them for approval. That's what I'm telling you. At some point, you're gonna have to approve the final role and it's done. But see, they do that before they mail it out. That's been what my complaint has been all along. You know, once they mail, the role is certified, they mail it out. And if you want to challenge the certified role, you have 60 days to do that. And that normally is done by challenge in circuit court, which is what the district has done in the past with our assessment issue. So that's where we're at right now. Okay? So at some point, our role has to be final. We can't say we have a final role before we mail it out unless we send it out earlier and say, okay, here it is, you have a right to challenge. No challenges after this date will be accepted. And then we bill. The problem with that is, you're gonna have to back up all of your hearings, back up all your public budget workshops, everything else, because you can't get a final role developed and then mail it out with time to challenge that within the necessary time parameters for adoption of the budget. There's no perfect world here. I don't have a better answer.
Well, you could write in the policy that it has to go to the court if the interim committee declined, or, you know, turns them down. Then they go, then they go back to the court. Like you said, we did it, that's the way we did it in the past. That could be written into the policy, right?
It can.
I would prefer that rather than hearing everybody that has a problem with their assessment comes to the board and pleading their case.
Right.
I don't know about the rest of y'all, but that makes a lot of sense to me.
How big a committee would that be? Would it be like three people?
Three persons normally, yes.
Three people. And would there be a board member on that or not?
A board-appointed member, yes. And the comptroller, and whomever else you wish to serve on that. If you want to, you could put two board members on there if you want to. Just remember, that's gonna be Sunshine Committee either way. Yep.
So you're gonna write up a policy and we're gonna look at it?
If that's the board's direction.
I think so, yeah. Okay. All right. Is that it?
That's all I've got, sir.
All right. Any unfinished business? Skip Tim, general managers' report.
Yes, sir. I'll be brief, because it's only been a short time since our last meeting. As I said to the board earlier, oddly enough, I've been here for almost five years and we've never lost a windshield to a golf ball in the public works compound. And this week, in the last 10 days, we've lost three. One to a vehicle parked in the very rear of the compound, one to a mower under the pole barn, and one to a utility crew driving out of the public works area. They took one in the windshield and they thought they had been shot. And it took them a few minutes to get over it. And we had a near miss where they almost took Mr. Hurley out as he was driving in to purchase, to get gas the other day. We've talked internally, and part of what we may do as part of the redesign, a relook at the public works area, is look at some type of net or some type of barrier, depending on what the final design is.
How are we coming on that?
We met as recently as yesterday. We had anticipated having that on the 13th. However, Mr. Howerton cannot be here based on a longstanding obligation, but he will present at the second meeting in February with his update. He's still, we've contacted the two property owners of the lots that we have interest in. One owes us money, which we're gonna go after as a deed in lieu of foreclosure. And the other one, we've contacted to say, are you interested in selling or trading? You're gonna own the only lot next to an industrial use, and you may not want to build a house there.
Okay. Do you have any updates on the tennis courts? Are we still on schedule for the end of March on that?
We'll be going to bid on that in the next couple of weeks. And we'll have another.
So you plan on, your start date's still end of March?
My start date on the actual, we have to see when we close it to April.
Mid-April, you said?
I have a question. I have a couple of questions on the water meter project, which was a million-dollar project. This was presented and pretty much sold to the board with the argument, number one, we would probably see an increase of 5% in our revenues based on the new meters. Tanya, has that happened?
The initial analysis that I've done is indicating anywhere from 3% to 6%. And that's, and I haven't looked at it in the last couple of months, but I can, what I can do is I can provide an updated analysis to see where we stand through the end of December.
Appreciate some documentation on that because that represents a pretty good sum.
Absolutely.
Second part of my question is addressed to our public works director. Again, in presenting this, you had indicated that we were gonna save a substantial number of district man-hours with the new meter system. Has that happened and how is that documented?
We do believe that we have saved man-hours and that we're not out manually reading 700 meters. We did, and this is for the, for the board to know, had experience in a few of the radios, a component failure with a transistor. The manufacturer has been quick to address those, and they actually have their staff making replacements of any of those radios that are giving us any issues from that. Remember, we have a 10-year full warranty and then a 10-year step-down warranty. So it's a full 20-year warranty. They are certainly being very responsive to any issues that may arise. In terms of documenting what our, what our total man-hours are, I can tell you this, our guys aren't doing overtime, are not using overtime to do their normal daily tasks or overtime to do any meter reading at this point. So while we haven't done a comprehensive analysis, you know, kind of a weather vane would indicate, yes, we are saving money from that perspective.
Well, let me ask it another way. Before the new project, how many of our people were allocated to meter reading?
Every single one of them.
What does that mean?
That means every, every single utility person that we had on the ground was out reading meters for about five days when it came time to do our monthly billing, because they had to go to 700 individual sites. And by the end, it was close to 900 individual sites scattered around the district. Now, if we have an issue with a meter, it takes one man to go out there and look at that meter. And, I mean, so we're dealing with one-fifth, one-fifth of one-tenth of what that number is.
That's quite a bit of manpower. Then what's the new allocation of that manpower?
Those, we're working on painting fire hydrants, we're working on valve exercising. You'll see coming before you at the next meeting, a valve exercising trailer. What we're going to do is with, in conjunction with a ground penetrating radar, we're gonna go through and locate all of the meters within the district. We have them on a, I'm sorry?
You said meters, valves.
I'm sorry, all the valves within the district. We have a, on our GIS map, a location for every meter. Reality is, we can find less than 10% of our meters. What this'll do is, number one, again, valves. My brain's right, I apologize. What we, we can only, we can find less than 10% of our valves. That causes us, if we have a break in one location, to shut, have to shut down larger portions of the district than we normally would. What this, what this ground penetrating radar will allow us to do is find the line, track the line to the valve. The valve exercising trailer has a jet mechanism that'll allow us to expose the valve, hook up the valve. It's got a valve exercising component on the arm that'll allow us to exercise the valve down and up, count the number of turns, identify its exact location on, in very remote or very accurate GPS, on a very accurate GPS system so that we can find it for future use if it's needed in the event of an emergency. And it'll also give us the ability to punch, to put that back on our GIS maps with great accuracy. That's where our staff resources are gonna be allocated for the coming several years. I think it'll take us probably three years to work through that.
You know, that's the first mention of our GIS system in months and months. Where are we in that in terms of utilization extent?
With GIS, what we currently have is all of our water lines, all of our sewer lines, our drainage structures, virtually every tangible utility asset is mapped on that within relative close approximate, proximity to its exact location. What we're gonna do with this GPS-mounted VAC trailer is get the exact location so that we can go to within a meter or within three feet of the exact location, and it'll help us identify problems much easier. GIS has been somewhat static for a while. Once you put in the information, you're not necessarily in there tinkering with it every day, but we do use it on a weekly basis. For instance, we had a-
Are we maintaining that or is Gator maintaining that?
Gator's maintaining that largely. Ms. Kennedy had a phone call from a woman the other day who wanted to look at her drainage and see where the storm sewer was, or the, sorry, the sanitary sewer was in relation to her drainage. So we were able to pull that up and provide her with a map so she can see it on her, on her actual property. So we do use it.
There was a gray box right outside of the water meter in the ground.
Small gray box?
Uh-huh.
About, gray box about, it's four inches by six inches?
Yeah. Had KP on it?
That's a radio.
Wire hooked up to it.
Mm-hmm.
What's it doing laying on the ground?
That's a good question. People have pulled them out. I don't know if one of our guys is in the process of servicing it, working on it.
It's been laying there for about four or five days.
I'd love to know where it's at.
It's in Cecilia.
Okay.
The first villa as you turn off of Magnolia.
I'll take care of that right now.
Right by the bushes there.
I had a couple more things.
All right.
Unless there are any more questions? Unless there are any more questions on. During our recent district-wide garage sales, we actually passed out more than seven, 700 maps to the garage sale of people who came to this site to pick up maps. I don't know how many people came, but we know we had at least 700 and I suspect we had more than that who actually came in and participated in the garage sale, which to me is just a phenomenal number. As I mentioned earlier, the Don Bell Signs Company was in here about a week ago. They spent several hours looking at all the entrances, the golf course layouts, and they are putting together their plans for your consideration, hopefully at, at the next meeting, if not at the second meeting in February, depending on timing. So that's forthcoming. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Finished business. All right. Any new business? Committee reports. Yeah, this is going fast.
Just like.
Yeah. All right. Public comment.
I just want to make a comment. Thank you, Mr. Miller. What you made a statement of is what I'm more or less trying to stop happening again, that somebody comes in here, goes in here, tells us what to do. If the board is all popular elected, they can't get in here and do it. That's my point. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Pat Gange, this question I think might be for Mr. McClure to answer. This is in regards to the add-on item that Supervisor White brought up and said that there was additional information that was requested by Supervisor Miller to be shared with the Board of Supervisors. If that happens, isn't, shouldn't that be done in public or is that a violation of Sunshine Law where they would meet and discuss that additional information?
I'm clueless about what you're talking about. I must have missed something. Are you saying, what?
I'm talking about the assessment adjustment for Mr. Roberts.
I knew, I understood that. I mean, what Sunshine violation are we talking about?
Well, there was some additional information that Mr. White came across that apparently the other board members are unaware of. And they said they would discuss it before the next meeting where Mr. Roberts could be in attendance.
Pat, any, any provision of that kind of information or discussion will be in public forum.
Well, that's what I'm asking. You said that it would be discussed amongst the board members prior to the next meeting where Mr. Roberts could be in attendance. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody would know what that additional information was.
Well, that's all I was asking because I wasn't aware of any information. I asked Larry to, if he can provide it, but it would do it in public forum.
Oh, okay. But it wasn't really straightforward, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. And I have a comment on the assessments that, that is in, that was in discussion is before Mr. McClure writes up the new procedure or policy, whichever it is, can we entertain the possibility of tying it into the county taxes, assess, taxes so that it can be collected altogether? We were very successful in that at one time and had very little outstanding debt as far as assessments that were unpaid.
That, of course, is a question to the board, but I would, I would address this one very big issue. Here's what it is. The tax collector, when we approached last time, would only accept properties that were current. That means instead of billing all of our properties on the tax roll, we had, we still had a half and half system.
Okay.
And that was really not a very good system.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification.
So that's the, and we still have a lot of delinquent properties. Now, now if the board, I would suggest this to you, if you wanted to just lower your heads and say, okay, let's identify the properties that we want to try to collect on and with respect to the others, we're, we're just going to write all that off and proceed forward with current assessments only and put it on the tax roll. I think that's something the board can do, okay?
I would like to see-
And that would be one method that would work, but aside from that, I don't think you're going to get the property appraiser to be willing to accept delinquencies on the tax roll.
Well, I would like to see every effort made to collect those delinquencies. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
On Mr. Roberts, unfortunately, I was not able to attend that board meeting, but did Mr. Roberts have a unity of title on these properties? Anybody answer that question?
What's the question, Gene? I didn't hear you.
Did Mr. Roberts have a unity of title on his two properties? The lot and the lot and a half?
No, but the, he's got a warranty deed that identifies it as a lot and a half.
Okay. But at some point in time, I think the district has, not the district can allow it. I mean, if someone goes to downtown, they can issue a unity of title where they would combine multiple lots. And I think that's happened in the district.
Yeah, we just had that discussion. As a matter of fact, we just had a resolution at the last meeting. If you, if you go into the minutes of the last meeting and read that, we just acted on that at the last meeting.
That you cannot have a unity of title?
I don't know whether Mr. Roberts has got one or not, but, but there was a resolution passed at the last meeting in reference to the unity of title situation.
Okay. And what was the resolution that you cannot do it?
Well, I don't, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Mr. McClure, could you?
It's a matter of public record.
The resolution addressed how lots would be assessed subject to a unity of title. The general theory was this, let's say you have three lots.
Right.
And you have a house on one of those lots, even if it overlaps into one or more of the other lots, the only, only, the primary lot would be assessed as completely improved.
Right.
And the other two lots would, would typically have an unimproved assessment of them.
Okay. If that being the case, is there any large bank in Seabring that owns a string of lots that are continuous, that have filed for unity of title and they have one assessment?
No.
I'm thinking of the lots along Sun and Lake Boulevard prior to reaching Magnolia.
No.
You referring to the lots now owned by Mr. Horneck?
Yes.
That they purchased from Howells Independent Bank?
Yes.
Those are all, to my knowledge, assessed separately.
Right. Okay.
Roberts did not have a unity of title.
He didn't have a unity of title? No. Can we legally stop people from having a unity of title?
No. Certainly not.
If that being the case in this resolution that was passed is kind of moot, isn't it?
I don't think so. I think there was a real need for the resolution because it governs how the district assesses properties that are multiple lot ownerships with one improvement on it. Once, I mean, we, there was no written guidance on that ever anywhere. The staff had no way to know how to exactly to assess properties. This, this gives staff guidance as to how to apply the rates adopted by the board to the specific properties. And by the way, it was Mr. Roberts' case that, that kind of triggered some of that.
I understand that. So if he had two lots and you put the house 50% on one and 50% on the other, what would the assessment rate be?
That is exactly the situation we addressed and it's one improved lot and one unimproved lot.
But even though you have a house that's half and half?
Even though.
Wow.
It's based on benefits received by the property.
I'm sorry you weren't here to hear the whole spiel, but- I'm sorry as well because I tried to listen to it on the, on the recorded version. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other public comment? Bring it back to the board.
I want to thank Mr. Miller for the job he did this last year and I appreciate it very much. It's not, it's a tough job.
Thank you, sir.
I've got one, I got one other question. This is for Tanya and I should, I could ask it when David Forrester was up there. Are we getting the, the transfer to the golf, to the general fund from the Golf Association to, to, for the recovery of the GPS system? Is that happening?
We have not had a need to transfer to the golf.
I just didn't want that to be forgotten.
So we, we have not forgotten it and we have discussed it and currently no transfers have been initiated to golf.
I don't think that's her answer, is what you're asking. I don't think she's answering your question.
She said there hadn't been any transfers.
But she's talking about us helping the, transferring money to the golf community, right?
Yes, this is the assessments that we budgeted in general fund to transfer to the golf fund.
He's asking, I think he's asking the revenue from the GPS, has that been transferred to the district?
Dollar around.
We deposit those monies right into the district general fund and we do track those.
Okay, so it has been?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mike, I want to expand a little bit on the discussion on the county acquiring the properties in Sun and Lake. One thing you didn't mention is the fact that their utilization of, of those properties is governed by zoning that's in place for those properties. And we have, what, a 90-some percent residential zoning? So there, there's some restrictions as to what they, they can do on that. The other thing is when they acquire the property and it goes through the process, somebody asked me if all the bonds go off as well.
Yes.
So they come back totally devoid of any incomerses, is that right?
Yes.
And you had indicated, you had some discussion with the county, because this represents quite a, an opportunity in terms of, of rekindling some more growth in Sun and Lake, assuming that the county is some kind of a positive partner in all this. How do you see that?
Well, I actually had a conversation this week with a group out of Palm Beach County that was interested in acquiring a number of properties. And I do believe that the new, that the county staff member that's going to be in charge of that is someone we can probably work with, but I can, because that's Ms. Kennedy. She's going to actually overseeing that. And if you go into the county website, you go in to look at their bids, they have been systematically bidding properties by sealed bid and they've probably sold 100 or more throughout the county, but not in Sun and Lake. What I think the county will have to do, and I'm sure Ms. Kennedy will be part of that conversation, is what do we do with the 1,000, 1,200 lots that we're going to own in Sun and Lake? I would say the vast majority of them, about 1,000 of them, are west of Cortez. And then you've got 100 or so that are east of Cortez in units 16 and 25, and I think there may be a couple in 15.
We have, we have over 600 properties in unit 16 alone that are way delinquent. Aren't they going through the process?
But not all of them, not all of them have gone through the eschewement process. What happened about three or four years ago is you still had institutional buyers who would come in and buy tax certificates. And then that stopped. But that stopped the year after the county started the eschewement process of taking those properties that had not had any certificates bought for two years. Now, the county has not reinstituted their process of going back and picking up those properties that have at least two years of, where certificates have not been purchased. And the reason I think they haven't done that, if you look at the clerk's website, they are going through a very systematic process of where the institutional and other buyers are foreclosing on properties that they own throughout the county. So you're, you're still having sales every month, sometimes twice a month at the courthouse of people that are foreclosing on properties. The difference is, it's not the county doing it, it's private guys doing it. I can tell you there are three properties coming up in unit 16 that are being foreclosed in March. And one of the things we do is we track who winds up with those properties and tell them, oh, by the way, you owe us so much money. And then we proceed accordingly. So we, we are watching that. And I think at some point in time, the clerk of courts will probably go in and say, okay, I've got the backlog of institutionals, now we're going to start the eschewement process all over again on those properties that are two years or more delinquent.
Well, our short-term outlook and priority ought to be in those properties east of Cortez because we have the population, we have the amenities, we have the infrastructure. It would be very helpful if you could tell the board just what we're dealing with in terms of, of this county process for those properties east of Cortez.
Couple of things. One, the county will not take title to those properties until around September and October. What the county did is when they started the eschewement process, they started in unit two and went numerically through the other units. So therefore, you've got, they own some down in unit five. I think they probably own five or six down there. And then, but the majority of what they will be taking ownership of are in unit six through 14, which is all west of Cortez. And then they're going to take ownership of the ones east of Cortez, like I said, in September, October. The county has not decided yet what they want to do with such a large track of lots. They have the ability to package them in 50 and 100 lots. They have the ability to sell 1,000 of them off if they want to. But I suspect based on what they've done to date, they're going to go through a sealed bid process. What they haven't decided yet is what do we do in a situation of Sun and Lakes where we have all these lots, which is something we don't have in any other part of the county.
Do you have any indication that we would have any problem with their disposition of these lots in violation of any zoning that's in place?
Zoning has never been an issue.
Okay.
They're all subject, every property they sold is subject to the existing zoning. I mean, that goes without saying.
How are you dealing with this? I mean, you talk with these, you talk with Mark Hill down there?
Mark's not involved with it.
Okay.
I'm going to talk to the new business services manager when she gets on board.
Sure would help, be helpful for us to have as a definitive picture that we can, what's, what's going to happen over the next five years.
County doesn't know what they're going to do yet. I, I can tell you based on conversations I had as recently as Wednesday, they, they're not sure what they're going to do.
Are they, are they bound by the sealed bid process? I mean, can, can, I'm not going to, I don't know how to put this. I'm not saying can we make a deal with them, but I mean, could we have a first right of refusal agreement with them on certain lots and we can identify those?
Well, part of the conversation was, they called me and said, I understand there's some lots you might want, and there are. I basically told them, there's, there's one lot that we want that you currently own because you've taken it in unit six, which is, is at the end of Cortez. And I said, we want it for some potential expansion of Cortez at some point in the future. And I believe they're going to basically give that to us for road right-of-way purposes. Now, the law says that if it is a property that is within the city limits of a municipality, the county shall give it to the municipality. And that's what they've been doing at Avon Park in Seabring. They have been deeding the properties. However, special districts, us and Spring Hill or Sun, yeah.
Spring Lake, right.
Spring Lake has not. I believe they have given some properties to Spring Lake for use as part of their water reclamation project. But like I said, the county, they're not sure what they're going to do yet. And I hope that we, I intend to stay on top of it and, and hopefully I have some, some input into what they decide to do.
You said Mark Hill's not, who's involved specifically? It's county?
Well, it's been handled by their purchasing people and I believe up until this point, someone in the administrator's office. someone in the administrator's office. Mark's not involved because it's a property disposition issue. Mark's, that's not Mark's area.
I just wonder how sensitive purchasing and administration is with regards to land use and development.
Well, again, it has nothing to do with land use. It has to do with ownership.
It does if they decide to do something silly.
Well, again, it's subject to whatever zoning and land use is in place. If you buy it, it's whatever's there. They sold a BMX track, an old borrow pit in Avon Park for like $6,000 and it was subject to the existing zoning. They sold a, I call it a submerged tract of land down in Lake Placid that a guy wanted to put an alligator farm on. And that created some controversy because the folks thought, well, he's just going to put an alligator farm in. But in reality, he couldn't do that without a zoning change. So whoever bought it, bought it subject to whatever zoning's in place. It's not a zoning issue at all.
I would respectfully bring back to the board's attention a matter that I have discussed in the past with you. And that is, remember you had a fiduciary duty with respect to these bonds? And, and while you did everything you could to get people to pay and they didn't, it went to the county and now if suddenly the district gets them back without any of these bonds on them, I'm sorry, but I think you're just teeing yourself up for future problems. I'll just point that out to you respectfully.
And I will admit, the only ones I've asked for did not have bonds and they had been acquired by the county for non-payment of taxes. It was actually one strap number of about five lots. So I've been very, very sensitive with that.
Being adjourned? I recessed.
No, adjourned now. Adjourned. We recessed it for the other country coming back.
Oh, I got it, okay.
I haven't asked McConnell how to bring it back before he did it forward. But he said, oh boy, does he take him.
I know what you're saying. I need your files. I would expect...
Yes. You'll get them over the weekend.
Well, they did. Some of them did, some of them didn't.
You'll get them over the weekend.
No, they're gone.
I want us to feel comfortable for...
Well, then we need to...
I was going to say, who does the RFP? I mean, what? I mean, what's for us to do?